We'll call a regular meeting in the New York City Council for March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, five P M. to order. First items on the agenda is consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
We got a motion and a second to prove, prove the consent agenda items, any discussion on any? See and none, on favor say aye.
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 Pose nope, motion carries. Item two A, conduct a public hearing considering a resolution on the proposed two thousand sixteen utility street and alley improvements, group one project. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular capital improvement plot, project was included in the December fifteenth city council meeting. Engineering report reviewed and approved at that time, so we went through the process of assembling preliminary plans and scheduling a public hearing. As you can see, we've got about twelve locations. The estimated project cost for this is about three point three million dollars at this time. So you could open it up for public comments, I have not received any written comments with regard to this project.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing and we'll take them one by one. If there's anybody wants to say anything, please step up to the mic, name and address for the record. First one is Front Street, Eighth North Street to Twelfth North Street. Second one is Valley Street from Sixteenth South Street to Twentieth South Street. Third one is Minnesota Street from Thirteenth South to Sixteenth South. Fourth one is Fender Drive, Wardja Avenue, boy, some of these are tough.
Yeah, who named them, who's on that naming committee?
I don't know. Yeah. Anybody on those streets will be heard.
I did get a, I did get a call just before I came from a resident whose family has, living in that area and just expressing strong support for the completion of the streets and alleys in that, in that section. And I assume all the alleys are going to be paved at the same time?
Yes, Mr. President, the counselors, the roadways and alleys within the plat itself are included in this project as part of the development agreement. So we'll have finished roadways, sidewalks, street lighting, things of that nature, alleys.
Thank you.
Anybody like to be heard on those? See and none, go to number five. Alley block sixty seven, south of Center Street. Alley block sixty nine, south of Center Street. Please step up to the, yeah, could you go up to the mic, name and address this for the record?
Right, right there.
Right there.
Yeah, my name is Charlie Pladson. We live at three oh eight South Minnesota Street and our alley will be in the alley block sixty nine. I was just wondering if you have the costs. We live in a condominium, my party, Barb Wilford is here representing Elmar condos. We're just wondering if, when, what kind of billing you plan on doing and, and when that would be feasible to, for us to know about it.
Mr. Kayler?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Pladson.
Pladson.
P L A D S E N.
Good, um, yes, we certainly do, we have a cost estimate for these particular alleys. They, they run about forty-four dollars per linear foot, I believe your, your parcel is fifty fi- fifty feet, so that's twenty-two hundred. You've got four units, so the dividing that comes up to like five hundred and fifty dollars. At the end of the project, you'll get another notice in the mail with the exact amount that we're recommending. There'll be another public hearing, but that's, that's my estimate at this time and it's typically payable over ten years or you can pay it upfront, it's up, it's up to you.
Yeah, but we'll get the billing in the mail and everything like that.
You'll get a notice with the amount, there'll be another public hearing, then you'll get another final billing that you can pay within thirty days or can be over ten years.
When does that bill normally come?
Well, if we're gonna construct it this year, we typically don't even get finished with the project until next year with seal coating and everything, so it wouldn't be until even next year.
Oh, it'd be next year.
Next summer sometimes.
So then that gets on the taxes the following year if you don't plan to pay it upfront.
How much is, was it per linear foot?
You've got a kind of a unique situation, it's forty-four dollars per linear foot, per side, it's twenty-two hundred divided by four is about five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
If my math is okay today.
Okay, now, now, does the paving go all the way up to the, like, the garages in the back?
We, we pave fourteen feet in width for residential sections and then we'll match in driveways if you have an existing thing, but we don't like to pave, pave the entire fifty feet up to the property line, so we can work with the property owners on what you have there, you have kind of a long garage, as I recall.
Yeah, we got a four stall, and then, uh, well, it's five, what, what is the lines, the boundaries of the alley itself? We're about five and a half, our concrete is about five and a half feet from the, the outside part of the pole, if you can go by that, if that would be the border.
I couldn't tell you in relative to your concrete until we have it staked, but the alley is twenty feet in width, it's basically centered on probably what's there, so we can, we can help figure that out later when we get it staked.
Sure, that's all I had, thank you very much.
Be back.
Anybody else like to be heard on that one? Just for the record, Steve, now, the billing actually comes from the county, it does not come from the city, correct?
Initially, it comes from the city with regard to the, to the assessment amount, you, you have the public hearing, if it's approved, then it goes up to the county. We'll send them another letter indicating they can pay it at the county within thirty days of the, of the public hearing if it's approved. Or they can pay, it's payable over ten years with a simple interest that's tied into the bond issue, so we don't know that amount yet, but it's, it's been running about three and a half percent, so.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Mike Reese, and when they did the surveying for the alley, I talked to the surveyors and I asked them if he knew about how, how much it would cost. And he says, well, the way I understand it, he said if the alley was charged to the homeowners when it was put in, that the homeowners wouldn't have to pay for it again. Is that true?
It's not, not correct, and I, 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 I don't believe that's been said, but the reconstruction of alleys is typically specially assessed back to the adjoining property owners. I can't remember how old that alley is, that's, the life of that alley has long since expired, so you pay as the benefit occurs and that's the policy that, the assessment policy that's been adopted with the city is that reconstruction of alley, the cost of that is reassessed back to the pri- property owners.
Okay, well, that's what surveyor, whoever surveyed it told me, so that's why I asked the question.
I, I think he knows better than that, but I, we'll have a discussion with him.
So you're gonna take it down, how far?
We take it down approximately, Joe, help me out, I don't have the section. Fif- sixteen? Fifteen inches, so we come back with, uh, for three inches of blacktop and twelve inches of gravel. You probably have about two inches there now, or originally had two inches of blacktop.
For instance, the blacktop is good enough even for garbage trucks when they come through?
It, it's doable, I mean, how much do you wanna pay?
But I mean.
How much do you wanna pay? You know, we can keep building these sections up until it costs you five, four or five thousand dollars, and it's kind of a compromise. That's been working for us, that's what we've been doing the last ten years.
Okay, but if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it good right away, that, that's the point that I'm getting to.
I, I think we're doing it good right away.
Okay, because now you know it's got the dips in there, how much is in there now?
What was in there originally?
Well, they overlaid it to you.
Oh, I, I guess I'm not familiar with that, they might have did some patching in there, yeah. That's maintenance, I, I guess I don't know what's there, originally it was two inches.
You don't know what the original was?
It was two inches, six inches of gravel and two inches of blacktop.
Oh, okay, so now you're gonna put in three?
Yes.
Okay.
Twice the gravel and one and a half times the blacktop.
How long is that gonna take from start to finish?
Uh, usually doesn't take too long, they can probably get her knocked out in two or three weeks if it doesn't rain, not counting the, the establishment of the turf, re-establishment of the grass. So usually two, two to three weeks, they get in there and they excavate it, gravel it, and get some ready to pave, so.
Weather always plays a role in this.
Okay, thank you.
You can help and supervise for us.
I'll be out there.
Thank you, anybody else like to be heard on sixty-nine? Okay, number seven is, uh, block seventy, south of Center Street.
Okay, Ron Reinhardt, four nineteen South Broadway, this will probably, Mr. Kayler, have you looked at our alley ever?
I have, yes.
You know, it's got the one end, it's quite a bit higher than the other. The water goes down and it goes out and it backs up when it freezes. Boy, then you're sitting watering, if you just look at the alley now, how it's breaking up, are you gonna try to take away some of that?
I have to look at the sections, it's been a while since I looked at the plan.
Yeah. It's been that way since it was put in a long, long time ago, one of the first alleys, I'd say.
When you're talking about slope, you mean cross?
Yep, yeah, the slo- yep.
Yeah, that's, that, that is a difficult alley, we've got a lot of things going on there. We're actually gonna add some storm sewer and down on the south end.
Okay, yeah, that's the one, right, that's the really bad one.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna try and remedy all the side slopes, but I think we can make it a little bit better, looking at these sections, we're matching in pretty well with the existing driveways and everything, so once we get it laid out and, and staked and everything, if you're interested, we can kind of show you where it's gonna be. But I think we can make it quite a bit better.
I haven't, I, gosh, I don't think I've seen an alley like that in town that has such a deep slope there.
Yeah, it's always a challenge because you've got hills and.
Well, one there, I think they did that when they built that house years and years ago, they conformed with that, which probably wasn't the right thing to do.
Yep.
Okay, thank.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else like to be heard? Number eight, block seventy, south of Center Street. Number nine, alley block seventy-two, south of Center. Yes.
Seventy-one.
Oop, missed seventy-one. Missed seventy-one. Somebody on seventy-one, okay, seventy-two.
Take them both, seventy-one and seventy-two.
At seventy-two, my name is Gordon Hock, I live at six seventeen South Broadway, and they're gonna do our alley this year, and I was just wondering what is it gonna cost for, per foot? You said forty-four dollars.
That, that's our estimate, Mr. Hock, you have a fifty-foot wide, so we're guessing twenty-two hundred dollars for a fifty-foot parcel.
Would that be put to the taxes or do you have to pay that?
Again, it can be, it wouldn't be, you get another notice in the mail with the amount that we hope will be around that amount and we'll have another public hearing if that's approved by the city council. As I mentioned, that goes up to the county tax rolls, you've got thirty days to pay it up there in full, or it can go on the taxes for over ten years.
Because in the alley, I got mine, I put in like a brick driveway, not at the noopy, but I put in cement, but right up to the tower. Is that where they're gonna redo the, up where the tower is now or what?
What, what was your address again?
Well, it was like a, people put inside driveways.
What was your address?
Six seventeen South Broadway. I got like a single garage and a carport down there and I put it like, it's not that far, so I put in like a brick, brick driveway, you know? But a lot of them, they built new garage and they put in concrete, but they put right up to the tower where it is now, is that where they, they're gonna put the existing tower in then? Where it is at, at the location?
Yeah, I gotta look at the sections here.
Cause our alley is pretty bad shape, but, see, I bought that house in eighty-five, I think in eighty-seven they redid Broadway and then the state said, we always had parking on Broadway before. But when the state did it, they said, well, we'll go with no parking, but we'll do your alley, we'll plow your alleys in the wintertime, I haven't seen one plowed yet.
Well, we're sho- we're showing matching in the driveways pretty well, again, when we get a stake, we can meet with you out there and just kind of show you exactly what's gonna happen.
Well, because I have another, cause I park my van, a lot of people park, now, when they do the alley, have we parked on the side streets or what?
Yeah, you can park in the side streets, um, and typically they'll leave one end of the alley open at all times. When they get in there and dig deep, then it's kind of a day you maybe should park on the side street, but they get it gravelled usually by the end of the day or the next day and then you can drive back in there again.
Because we got a, have we got like a storm, a storm sewer, a grate in the?
Yes.
Is that the storm sewer in there or what?
Yes.
We got like, and do we do that or they just?
Well, we'll leave that storm sewer in there, we'll just match into it again, make it drain properly.
Okay, so, cause I, my people ask me, I think, to know what it would cost them, so then I can tell them.
Sure, yeah, it's, uh, usually about forty-four dollars per foot.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Number ten, alley block one oh five, south of Center Street.
Fred Valentin? Got a few questions for you, so that forty-four foot, uh, that forty-four dollar foot, um, quote applies to any kind of projects, is that correct? We're at Nineteen South State, we've got this lovely, you know?
You, you've got what we refer to as a T alley, so you would have, I believe, a hundred and sixty-five feet on one side, and in that, correct, you've got alongside.
Well, yeah, all the way to that other alley, yes.
Yeah, in this case, we've kind of adopted a modified assessment policy and that these T alleys will only especially assess a maximum of a hundred feet. So you're talking about forty-four hundred dollars for that whole side there.
Now, you know, I read here, it says east, west, west, now obviously there is Midwest Bank, uh, Midwest Bank, and then there's of course still some gravel there. You, are you gonna do anything with that?
We're, we're not doing anything with the gravel section, it's, it's, uh, just typically a reconstruction of the existing blacktop there. If they wanted to petition for improvements, initial improvements, we could do it at a later date, but we're just gonna do that, that existing blacktop section.
Fair enough, and then if I understood well, we're not to expect those projects to take place until next year, is that correct?
That, if everything goes according to plan, it'd be this summer, but the special assessments wouldn't happen until next year.
Oh, okay, got it, so we're, we're not gonna have to do it until next year. Um, the other thing I was thinking is, oh, yeah, the dip, are you guys doing anything about that or we're just, you know, if you are?
Just gonna bring that up.
We, um, there's a lot of people probably had, you know, undercarriage, under, under, undercar damage there. It's very steep and, um, I don't know if you can visualize it.
Talking about approach up to State Street, the steepness?
Yeah, the approach from State Street, as you go up and then down.
If you have a car, you will hit, you will bottom.
Well, and the garbage truck, of course.
Yeah, we, we show shaving a little of that off, I mean, we got, there's eight, eight, almost nine percent grade in there, we can't do a whole lot with it, but we can, we can make it better.
Absolutely, and then you said two to three weeks usually, right?
Yeah, weather dependent, you know, on a hill like that, if you get a big rain and all washes downhill, you lost two or three days and, but typically that's what it takes.
Anything else? Did I do good?
You bet.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that one? Next, number eleven, alley block one oh nine, south of Center Street. And number twelve, sidewalk improvements on, that's Twentieth South and Bridge Street. Anybody have anything? Step up to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Christine Boggins, I live at six twenty-one Fender, I'm sorry, I missed my time, so.
Okay, that's all right.
We're in the newer subdivision up there and it's gravel right now, in fact, we just moved in last year, I know there are people that have lived there for, uh, more years than we've been, obviously, eight or more. Um, but we are on the end of that, butts up against Haberly, is that how you say it? Uh, but anyway, it's, um, on a corner there in block two, and we have had a lot of trouble with mud this, um, season or when it rains heavily. And so I just am putting in a plug, um, even if, I, I know you have multiple things on the agenda here to do, if nothing else, if we could have it paved, it would be great. But the, the alley, we couldn't park in our garage for two weeks, I was afraid, um, coming out a couple of weeks ago, I thought I was gonna get stuck. And then just all the, it was tearing up our own driveway and the mud that was getting put in our garage was substantial. So, um, the road itself isn't bad, it's more the alley and this Haberly, um, which is between our house and Mr. Cochran's. It, it's really bad, it's, uh, and then when the garbage trucks go through, it's kind of an issue too. I guess that was the biggest thing, just, we're really pushing for that pavement. And, um, just wondering, if you do pave, are you paving, were you planning, the alleys are in the works then to do too?
Yes, Mr. President, I, all the roadways, Haberly, if that's how you pronounce it, I believe, Fender Drive, the alleys will all be paved, curb and gutter sidewalks. So hopefully the mud will not be a problem after this summer.
Okay.
And how long would you expect that big project to take?
They take a little longer, we've got some minor, uh, utility extensions, uh, we need to deal with and some re-grading and things, so, you know, it'll be a couple of months. It's, it's not terrible, but, you know, once they get going, they got curb and gutter comes and then.
We'll deal with it, um, as far as parking, um.
Well, for the most part, you can park in, in, on the roadways that are being worked on except during certain times, and the contractor typically will put flyers in the mail if you want to get on. My assistant does texting and emails, so we'll get you on a list and help you out, so.
Okay.
However you'd like to be notified, we can help with that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? See and none, entertainer.
I'll offer a motion to, uh, for the resolution, waive the hearing, close the public hearing and order in the two thousand sixteen utility, um, street and alley improvements, group one project.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion?
Let's get her done.
Assistant Finance Director, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Webster?
Yes.
Uh, President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item two B, conduct a public hearing to consider resolution approving the condition of the final plat to Valley Heights Sixth Edition located at fifteen twenty Westridge Road.
Just like to add from the planning commission, uh, we recommended approval, um, we went over it and that was last month's meeting and, uh, there were a couple of conditions that, uh, they're working on the details, you know, with the utilities and that were not nor- normal, but, you know, they're aware of it and how they're gonna handle it.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Public hearings, so.
Anybody else like, anybody out in the audience like to be heard? See and none? Entertainer motion, close public hearing.
I'll offer a motion to close public hearing and recommend, uh, offer a resolution, waive the reading, approve the conditions with the final plat for Valley Hills Sixth Edition located at fifteen twenty Westridge Road.
Second.
We got a motion and a second closed public hearing, off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See and none, Assistant Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher? Yes. Counselor Mann?
Yes.
Counselor Schutz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries, item three A, consider resolution requesting funding from the two thousand sixteen Minnesota Bond Bill for the German Park Outdoor Performance Art Center Amphitheater.
Yes, Mr. President, the Park and Rec, uh, Commission, uh, heard this issue yesterday and, uh, unanimously voted to recommend that, uh, the city council approve this request and, uh, just remind the council that we've gotten, uh, quite a number of generous donations for this project, and I think that the, that's a real indication that the people who are making these generous donations would like to see this project move forward. Um, and so, uh, if we can apply for and get this grant, I think we can, uh, get, get this as part of the bonding bill, uh, the hope is we can get this, get this done.
Do we have a timetable on this grant, when, when it, the results wouldn't, we know, or what are our chances?
Here we go.
Park and Recreation Director, Tom Schmitz, President Schmitz, counselors, um, this would be a request in this year's legislative bonding bill, which, uh, you know, is gonna be taking place and throughout April. And, uh, it's a bonding session, they expect it to be relatively short, I know they're very busy up there, there's a lot of high level, uh, topics and funding requests. Um, so, uh, we don't know, you know, we may, we'll, we'll find out sooner than, uh, a normal session would be my estimate.
So if we don't get it this year, we'll just apply for it again next year, is that the plan?
Well, two years.
I mean, two years on its bonding, yeah.
That's a possibility, yes.
Or we would just potentially move forward. I strongly support this, I looked at the plans, um, we have, you know, so many of our older folks that enjoy these concert, um, parks and it's just not very safe for them right now. I mean, well, the plans, I just really like the, the wheelchair access for folks that wanna come in wheelchairs, that upper level access, um, the families that can come in and sit on these benches. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at the designs, but I, I really like this design for this park, so I'm gonna go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading for this.
I'll second it.
We got a motion to second off the resolution, waived reading, this is for three hundred thousand dollars.
Anything else you wanna let us know or?
No, unless there's any questions that the council has.
Anybody have anything for Tom?
Well, the other, I think, um, you might make it clear how much money we have and how much, uh, how much the total project is, uh, expected to be so that people understand.
Certainly, yeah, as the action form denotes here, we've got a little over three hundred thousand dollars in cash and pledges and, uh, we're, uh, asking for a similar match. The project is anticipated to cost near six hundred thousand dollars.
And I think we should mention that, you know, according to our data here, we have thirty-five thousand in cash coming from two private donors, a hundred and one thousand from two private pledges, a hundred and thirty-five thousand from our Park and Rec budget, and thirty to forty, thirty to forty thousand product pledge from American Art Stone. That just says a lot that our community really wants this project to be done and is used so much, I used to live down there, um, twenty years ago and, and it was used a lot, I mean, I was down there a lot. There's a lot of families, but a lot of older folks I think would enjoy and use this park a lot more if it's set up, uh, to be handicapped accessible, so hopefully we can get it.
Yep.
As a, as a performer, and I see another performer sitting out in the audience, uh, if we could get the people to move closer to us, accessibly to, we can move closer to us, because sometimes you're looking way up there on top of the hill to see the people that are listening to you.
And they're up there that close, cause they can't get down.
They can't get down, that's correct, and so it really will be nice if they will be able, have the opportunity and the accessibility to move down closer to us.
Yeah, probably the only thing I looked, when I looked at the, uh, is to make sure that we have the shade trees up in that area where the wheelchairs are gonna be or have. in that area where the wheelchairs are gonna be, or have some type of shading capability up there. That's the only thing I looked at that I saw, because it's similar to that park that we have over in Mankato, um, which doesn't, has little to no shade, and, and boy, that, that can get pretty hot over there in a very short amount of time. So that was my only, there is some trees back there, but I don't know if they're really shade trees, but that was the only thing I, I saw that I'm like, well, I'm gonna make sure those are some good shade trees back there, but, great project.
Anybody else have anything? See nothing? Assistant Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher? Yes. Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Webster?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Item four A, consider motion approved the professional service agreement with Brown InterTech to provide material testing services for the two thousand fifteen MESA project, uh, improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, that's for three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. Any more discussion?
Just out of curiosity, is it twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Oh, oops.
Uh, it's twenty fifteen, actually, Mr. President. We bid this in twenty fifteen, and I may recall the bids. We got one bid, and it was quite a bit over the engineer's estimate. We rebid it, and we have it twenty sixteen, so I just left it. Because of, the plans are all signed and everything, so it is correct.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, a second?
Motion, second.
Any more discussions? See none? Pardon? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close note, motion carries. Item four B, consider motion to award a bid to the exterior lighting project at the New Ulm Public Library. That's an amount, uh, forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'd like to hear about this project.
Chris Wiley, Library Director. And if New Cat could pull up the screen for me. Um, what you're gonna see first is the current lighting situation. I was, uh, here before you in August when we discussed what we have. Uh, seventeen poles with globe fixtures. You see fifteen circles here because between the main library and the Minnesota Music Hall of Fame, one circle encompasses three lights. They're in various states of repair. Several of them no longer work. There's some corrosion, difficult to clean. The poles have been dented over time. And so at that point, the library board and the city council approved, uh, the engineering, um, design, um, project. They've come back to us with, uh, an interesting scheme. We're going from seventeen poles and globe fixtures to ten poles and eleven fixtures. First, you'll see two circles. They each encompass two antique lights. Right in front of Broadway, that's two lights that will flank that wooden door. And then on First North Street, that's the original entrance to the library, and that too is antique. And they will look very similar to what you see here, except for that little peak at the top, um, that won't be there. And it'll be a very simple circular base. These are ten feet tall. Then around the rest of the building, there will be six poles. Um, in the bottom right-hand corner, that's two lights on one pole. And these will be what they call shoebox design with a square pole. That's a standard parking lot light. We hope that with the, the architecture of the building, that these just kind of blend in. Being very horizontal. Uh, the bid, uh, the lowest bid that we received was from Full Service for forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. We did receive two other bids, um, and then this would come out of fund balance, which currently stands at about four hundred thousand dollars for the library.
The top two bids were quite close, huh?
They were very close.
Thirty-some dollars?
I guess, do we have a reason why one bid is twenty thousand dollars more? I mean, I mean, if they had an engineering spec, and...
I don't know.
Okay.
Somebody slipped on the pen, I think.
Yeah. I think it's nice in a way of, you know, local businesses looking at doing it, and, uh, they're pretty competitive, so.
The only question I had was with this type of lighting. Is this a similar type of lighting we would use in the future for other parking lot replacement lights? I mean, do we want a similar style in the city? Not that it's a big deal, but I was just kinda curious. If this is the new wave of lighting, is this what we're gonna see in our city parking lots in the future too?
I would have to say they're, they're probably not synchronized to anything else we would do in other parts of, like, the public parking lots. The, the lighting around the library is, is pretty one locational.
Okay.
You know, uh, most of our municipal parking lots are uniform, but most of these light fixtures are between two buildings. They're probably unique just to the site.
Well, I suppose it's, has to stay pretty lit up, because there's a lot of kids and stuff around, but these are all LED lights.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think what you're also seeing here is, you know, when you saw the, the shoebox lighting, the flat, uh, surface, you know?
It's kinda different.
For years, they've been going towards the no light shining up into the sky to try and minimize the, uh, light pollution. And, you know, these are the standard. Now, we're going to LEDs so that, uh, obviously the, you know, maybe, yeah, I won't say one-tenth, you know, a normal residential light, as they say, you know, it uses one-tenth of the power a regular light bulb would use, but, you know, these, this will not only reduce the energy consumption from the library's perspective, but, give a nice, nice clean light. And it could be something that, once we see these, it might be something we look at when we retrofit other, other parking lots, so.
That's what I was kinda thinking. It might be a test, test site, but I'll mo- I'll offer the motion to approve this.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close note, motion carries. Item four C, consider a resolution authorizing the Green Corp grant application to fund the Minnesota Green Corp position to work on urban forestry projects.
Again, this came before the Park and Rec, uh, Commission yesterday, uh, and the Commission voted unanimously to, uh, recommend that we move forward on this.
And so did the Tree Advisory Commission.
Right.
I guess I would be interested in hearing more about that.
Tom?
Certainly. President Schmidt, uh, councilors, this is really a joint, uh, request for application between the Tree Advisory Commission, the Park and Recreation Commission, and, um, you know, actually, a multiple number of departments that are advisors to the Tree Advisory Commission. The Engineering Department, Public Works Department, Public Utilities, and, uh, of course, Park and Rec. And what we're requesting here is to apply for a position. This is an eleven-month position, uh, funded through the State Pollution Control Agency for a Green Corps, uh, participant to come into the community September, uh, for the following eleven months. There's a number of different emphasis areas, as you see in the action sheet, urban forestry, energy conservation, local foods, waste prevention, recycling, and others. And we are, uh, focusing on the urban forestry, um, track, so to speak. And, uh, the reason for, uh, asking for a participant is to help us move some of our initiatives forward. And we've got a variety of initiatives from disease prevention, um, planning programs, pruning programs, inventorying of our urban forest, and, um, just a wide variety of needs we have. We've got tree work being done by a number of different departments, and, uh, some collaboration has been taking place. There's an opportunity for, uh, I think, more emphasis and more focus and collaboration, and an assistant to help us with that will, uh, move some of these initiatives forward. Allow us to accomplish more work.
Tom, have we done this before?
No, uh, we haven't. Uh, President Schmidt, councilors, there is a, uh, Green Corps participant in the community now. The Hearts, Heart of New Ulm has, uh, applied for and been granted a participant, um, in this past cycle. Um, and that gentleman is working on complete streets, uh, safe routes to school, and, uh, some, some healthy, uh, walk and, and bike initiatives for the community. Very successful. Uh, Cindy Winters is the supervisor of that participant. They're very happy with that. Uh, I know the school district is very excited about the work that's been completed with that. You can apply for one or two participants. Um, we're suggesting just to try this one, uh, with the city. I know the Heart of New Ulm and that group is going to be applying for a, you know, an extension or another participant for, uh, the eleven months, uh, following the participant they have right now. So it's our first, uh, application for the Green Corps, uh, from the city that I'm aware, aware of.
And if we get this, they'll come in and, you know, present perhaps on a couple things or findings, you know, to the council down the line?
Yes, you betcha.
So when the...
The cost to the city, uh, for this is what?
Zero. Uh, the cost is very minimal. We'll be, uh, providing office, a workspace, a workstation, and, uh, a vehicle. Uh, Public Works is going to generously offer a surplus pickup truck available. And, and really, that's about it. Um, there's no, uh, the wages and benefits are paid for by the Green Corps program, not the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're the, you are the direct supervisor?
Um, I will be the, uh, host site supervisor, and all of the other advisors from the various departments will be assisting with different tasks and, uh, and projects.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. President, go ahead. Uh, so the individual would not be an employee of the City of New Ulm?
Correct.
Um, would, would he be covered under someone else's workers' compensation?
Yes, yes. That is also, um, covered through the Green Corps program.
If he's driving a city vehicle, is he going to be insured for that?
My understanding is yes, um...
We'll have to ask the city attorney.
Well, I think we need to ask the, we need to check the insurance policy, or the coverage that we would have for that, because that's kind of an unusual situation.
Well, yeah, typically, when you see volunteers come in and they're gonna help clean up a park or something like that, uh, you know, they're covered for the normal bumps and bruises and twisted ankles and scrapes and whatnot, uh, but we, we can check on the vehicle aspect. I, uh, we, we bring in a, a foreign, uh, German national from Germany on the Sister City Program, and we offer them a vehicle through the local dealership and turn them loose. Uh, this isn't even nearly as risky as that.
But you'll check on it.
But I will check on it. I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll, we'll be okay.
Yeah, I think you're fine in that area too.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Tom?
County does it.
No, I think it'll be great.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any more, no more questions? Finance, Assistant Finance Director, please call a roll.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Assistant Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher? Yes. Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business? Whoop, that's just before I go there. That's, we got, uh, special meeting for Thursday, March seventeenth at five P M.
Work session, work session, work session. How long is that gonna be? Is the parade gonna be over? I'm just joking.
It goes on for two hours, doesn't it?
All right, all right. You're right, you're right, you're right.
All right. Meeting adjourned.